I'll call the panel select board for order at 7:00 on November 17, 2016. Agenda approval, minutes, warrants, mail, nothing on the new business, old business, update on Route 346, town property. Anything anybody would like to add?
I've got a couple of things. First one is the discussion on engineering for the culvert job on Mount Anthony Road. And the other one is a discussion on the equipment that we're going to be putting out for bid. And then I just have a question about our agenda, to Ronnie.
Discussion on the culvert, discussion on, what else?
Equipment sale bids.
Yeah, alright, okay. Discussion on equipment, alright. And you've got a question?
Yeah, I've got a question. So, last week, we didn't have anything for our agenda for discussion, and this week, we didn't either. I'm concerned that in the last couple of months, we brought up a number of issues that we've talked about, and they're kind of sitting on the back burner idling. I'm wondering if we should have those somehow or another incorporate those so they're coming up again at a following meeting. Just for instance, we've got the Roos building, it'd be nice to know where we are on that. Website, we brought that up, be interesting to know where we are there. Ronnie, you brought up old roads six or eight months ago, we haven't talked about that, done anything with that.
The roads ain't, but these are all things that Linda, you have on a follow-up list for us, right?
Policies, we've talked about policies, we've talked about the town administrator position. I think we need to somehow or another revisit these each week if we're going to try to get some of these, try to get them resolved. I'd like to, for the next meeting, I'd like to have an update on the Roos building project, see what's happening there, just to start with. But the rest of these, I'm not sure, you know, maybe you have an idea how we can, how we can bring these in?
You can't have, you won't be able to get an update on the Roos building because they're not ready to give you an update yet.
Okay, so we do know that, okay.
Those types, some types of things are in other committees' hands.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure if we, okay, I wasn't sure if that was something we had to ask for, or, okay.
Can you give us like a little status thing each week of where we stand so that we're not nagging you with something like this? Then we know where we're concerned on the Roos.
Old roads is, that was in Joel's court, I don't believe he's even had a chance to look at all of those.
We talked about them some, I guess I gotta throw it back to you guys. We're not really going to lose a lot of state aid on them.
But anyway, that's where we are with that for, okay.
That type of thing, as far as, what little I know about it is, in order to discontinue something or anything else, you have to have hearings.
Yeah.
So they'll have to be scheduled out.
Yeah, we'll have to start the process.
Stuff like that, now if we're ready to do that, well, seeing so, yeah, well, that was brought up before, we may lose some money from taking these things out, but I didn't think it was much to start with, but, and you're kind of reaffirming that. So as far as I'm concerned, I think that we ought to figure out when we can have, I mean now we're headed into, this is a bad time now, we have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas for crying out loud in three weeks after that. So I mean, it's a, it's a bad time for hearings and stuff like that. People are traveling, they're doing all kinds of things. But we should schedule this stuff out and get it, get it moving. So I'll, well, just make a note of it, Linda, I guess, that's the only thing I can tell you, and then try to get something scheduled.
Who's, who's, are you, are you setting the agenda on Tuesdays?
Well, I work with, I work, I work with Linda on it, everybody calls in for the agenda.
Okay.
You've called in.
Right.
She's called in.
Right, but I know, I'm just saying, we've brought them up in the past, I'm just trying to say, what can we do so that we don't have to keep repeating ourselves and bringing it up over and over? It seems like we're putting things on the back burner and they're just idling there, we're not doing anything with them. I mean, where are we with the town administrator? I mean, we, we're not even, nobody, everybody has a different idea where we are.
Well, that's it, we talked about that before, and they said, well, before the, before the-
I thought you were gonna, yeah, I thought you were gonna set someone up to come down and talk to us.
Not me, I wouldn't set anybody up to come down and talk to us, we already had that one fellow come down. Then somebody said, well, uh, uh, someone else could give us some information, oh, somebody said, mentioned it, Shasbury. I think that might have been you, Zoo.
Yeah, I think-
But I don't think that was followed up on. But I mean, if we want to do anything, well, it's, we gotta, I guess we'll have to make a note and put it down, that's all I can tell you.
It's just that people are asking us these things and I go, I have nothing to tell them.
Neither do I, but they're not asking me, so apparently, they're asking people who will move things forward. Maybe I don't do it fast enough. But anyway, I think that's what, I haven't had anybody ask me, but I know that we have talked about it and we said, well, we'll find out what Shasbury does. Shasbury is equivalent to us, same amount of people.
Right.
Pretty much the same tax, stuff, everything else. We can't compare ourselves with Bennington, that's a whole different, that ain't, that ain't a town, that's a municipality. So, but I have no objections to any of this stuff happening, but, you know, if, well, like, last week, I got a couple of emails, said there was, said there was nothing going on, so why are we having a meeting? Look, I'm not here to, to try to be a mayor, or, or whatchamacallit, executive assistant, I'm not. I'm here, matter of fact, I was perfectly happy just being a select board member. I was nominated for this chairman job, I'm not excited about that either, folks. But I want to tell you something right now, if we got real problems, let's call it in and let's get, let's get it moving. I got no problem with that, but don't wait until we come out of, well, why is this stuff setting? It's setting because nobody did anything last week.
Unless, so that we can move, so, okay, that, I think that's really, Ron, I think that's where we're, I think you hit the nail on the head.
I had suggested before that we have a follow-up list of things, projects we're working on-
That's right, and then we would know what, where we're headed, okay? So, um, so that's just something that I think that we're going to have to start moving on.
Okay, so I guess that's, whenever we bring something up, we'll just say-
I mean, you talked, for instance, we talked about, a few minutes ago, we talked about the Roos, and, you know, Linda said, well, they're waiting for the committee. Well, I think that we ought to just have the committee voice their opinion on that, approximately when they should come up with an answer, or have something to offer us, or, you know, I mean, that's really what we're looking for, instead of just saying, well, they're going to get back to it someday, okay? And, um-
Just a status report each week would help us a lot.
Myself personally, as far as, as far as-
Anytime you have a question, email me, you know.
Yeah, as far, as far, as far as whether we wanted to have the Roos or the building here, or build a new one, or, it's already December. I mean, we probably should try our best to have something on for March.
I think Frank realizes-
Okay, no, and I think they want to do that, am I correct?
We shouldn't be sitting on our hands waiting for the budget to come up.
That's right.
Why aren't we working on that thing?
Usually December is when we-
Budget notices went out.
So what's the procedure on that?
We start usually working on budget in December, month of December.
Yeah.
So that's right on schedule then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that, whatever we talk about, we'll have to whisper in Linda's ear, look, write that down, so that, remind us, okay? Or whatever, no matter how we're going to do it, whether we got a schedule or what we're doing. But I mean, some of this stuff, I mean, like the Roos thing, I expected to hear something a long time ago from the people working on it, not from me.
No, well-
I have nothing to do with it.
Well, that's what we are waiting for, Ron.
He's trying to run a meeting here, that's all I'm doing. I have no, I have no, I don't care one way or the other, how this goes. It doesn't, you know, I mean, it's up to the people, not up to me. But I mean, I would think that, well, I mean, it's no big deal, I'll call one of them people on that town board thing, and town committee, or town hall committee, or whatever, and tell them, look, you got something, ain't you?
Right.
I'm not used to working like this. I work right along.
You are.
With my own, my own thing. And I know Henry does the same thing.
That's right.
I go day to day, and I got a lot of things on my plate too at this time of year, so it's not, you know, I ain't dedicating every minute-
But the way we can handle it though, is if you have a list and-
That's good, that's, and that's what we should do, we'll run down through it. I can agree with that 100%. Okay, so, all right, we gone far enough on that? Are we, get a motion to approve the agenda, or you want to add some more?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes for 11-316?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mark. Okay? That's road taxes paid, which was the large one there, 59,571 dollars, 595,471 dollars. That was the large one on there, that's why that's, that figure is so big. Okay? Payroll, 11-616, and that was 7,677.61. Accounts payable for 11-1816, and that-
There's school taxes on there, Ronnie.
School taxes?
Yeah, that's why it's so big, I see you look at it.
Yeah.
For Mount Anthony and for the Pownell Elementary School.
That, that really says 3 million.
It's really 3 million.
3 million... 20, no, 578,000, 3,029, 578.65. Oh, I'm not used to using them big figures. But that's, well, the treasurer explained that, that's all the school things on there.
I could change.
All right, and payroll for 11-1316, that was 5,445.71. Get a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Mail. All right, road foreman's report, November 17. Cutting patch holes on Main Street Bridge washed off the deck, Saturday morning sealed cracks in seams, replaced signs on Lad and Brookman Road, finished up mowing on the back roads, fixed some bad spots with degrader, cleaned the culvert on upper Old Military Road, fixed water bars farther up, cutting and chipping brush on Lad Road, took five dead trees down on Woods Road and West Meadow and Livinos, some shop work on a spare truck, got it inspected. Next week, going to cut some brush, clean along the ledges for the back hole and truck on Burlington Road for better drainage along the new blacktop. So that was our road foreman's report. Now, transfer station, our guy isn't here, so he left us a report, Tom Schuie, and he said Bruce Linger has returned to a slightly shortened schedule after his knee replacement, he's coming along just fine. A substitute helper, Stan Wilkinson, has helped with work on coveries as well as substituting for Fred while I was away last month, this is Tom saying this. This hire has really worked out well. The second cover is hinge cover and the wall section is complete, we're receiving more on our recycling of lead. We received over 400 for our last electronic recycling, we have another one to schedule to make two large shipments in less than five months of collecting. We are receiving about 5 cents per pound for our scrap metal and no hauling cost. I'll be recycling the lead batteries next week, household batteries are still coming in regularly with seven boxes at 60-plus pounds per box being shipped so far this year. At our SWIP meeting last month, the budget was adopted, our share is 17,851.95 annually. This is a high-end amount on the contract, it could be substantially less in reality. Joel Brink and the highway crew have rebuilt the construction dumpster walls in the north collection point, they've also repaired our wipers on the back hole, they are being commended for such a great job and cooperation. Town office, there's a small amount of painting to be completed, the humistack control fan and dehumidifier are installed and wired in, the dehumidifier will be turned on in the spring. While doing the wiring of the units in the crossface, electrician showed me a junction box that was fairly corroded, we came in on Saturday, 26 shut the power off to the building and replaced the junction box. Signs have been posted on the front of the building, a new mailbox will be placed on the front as reefer people to pick up brochures and such. A new locked drop box will be placed on the rear door for sensitive payments and such. A new town uponal sign will be placed in front of the building and can be moved to a new office location if needed. A new town clerk sign will be placed in front of the building. That's the report from Tom Schuie. Zoning administrator for the month 9-10, he had number of applications, 10, number accepted, 10, number returned, none. Number of permits granted, five permits, two home, one camp, one addition, one shell. Standard calls for questions on lot size, shed size, setbacks, type of uses allowed, and border lines. Did drive around getting ready to issue warnings on trash and yards. That's from Nelson, our zoning administrator. Now, and we got taxes from our treasurer, Ellen, submitted this, and it's, we got 342,984 delinquent tax, 93% of the taxes were collected, and 7% are delinquent.
Yeah, and it was 328,000, but I had a couple checks that came back that were written the last couple days, and once they do that, they go delinquent, because there are no funds and there's non-payment. So it bumped it up to the 342, so it was looking a lot better, but something happened, so.
Well, we can't-
But that's pretty good, 93% is-
We can't change much of that, I guess, we got to deal with what's going to happen.
Right.
All right, now, we got here, town uponal, notice of intent to commence construction for the Pownell solar array, uh, where are you putting this thing up?
Northwest Hill.
Northwest Hill, over on Palmer's property, right, gravel bed?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty much, there's quite a bit of it up already, because I saw it from Route 7.
They're down there tonight with the lights on doing it, working on it.
Oh yeah, they've been working right along, trailer trucks are over there, I saw it was going on, but it didn't happen to, I didn't get here early enough to go through all the stuff and make sure that I was familiar with everything. And this here is-
That pretty much is the highlight.
Well, yeah, this is from-
It's from the state.
This is from the state, thanks for sending along your results, as noted, no great surprises, continued slight impacts in MW 2, 4, and 5, but no trends of concern, PFCs total 19, parts per trillion, one part per trillion below the Vermont Health Advisory of 20. Again, no plans to resample. Now, that's at the south, and this here is from James Buzz.
Yeah, so what happened, they, the state decided to test the, our transfer station as they tested the Shasbury one, and they did find PFOA over there, however, below the limits.
Well, that's good, that's good news, it's below the limit, shouldn't get any higher, I don't think. Anyway, that's, that's the mail.
I think that was supposed to be the mail.
That has already gone by.
Oh.
It says here, that's why I threw it over there, it said Bennington County Regional Commission, Thursday, November 17.
Yeah, it was probably, that was in last, that was in last week's-
At 5:30, you're too late, folks, don't go there now.
Just that one.
Okay, so, we'll go on. New business, we want to talk about the culvert, because we got to get that thing moving.
We're going to go into old of that.
That's going to go under old business, Ron, because it was brought up before.
All right, all right.
Okay, so-
Other one, old business.
So there isn't any-
Same thing with the other one, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so old business, we got an update on Route 346 town property, I don't know where that stands now, I was told to try to get set up for a water test-
Yeah, all right.
-which I did, and everything is ready to go, but they've not contacted me to take the sample.
True. The purchase and sales agreement was signed on Monday, November 14, for the accepted offer amount with an estimated closing date of December 16. The addendum to the sales contract was the seller to provide potable water report to the purchaser, and the purchaser to accept it. We are waiting, Ron is waiting actually, for the sampling people to come and draw the water from the well. They've been in North Pownell testing other sites, and I hear today that they're also visiting Pownell Center again, testing addition-
They're doing a lot more tests, just-
A lot more testing going on.
My brother happened to see the guy, and he had a whole list of names, that they'd gone on both sides of them, but they want these people checked too, I guess, so.
So do they want that test done before the closing?
Yeah, it's pending on that, correct?
And we can have it back in time for the closing?
Well, either that or there won't be any closing.
Right.
Right. I mean, this is, this agreement, we've already signed this probably three times already.
Yeah.
So-
Yes, I've signed papers to go forward as long as this, I don't want to get any liability for the town.
The purchaser fully understands what we're waiting for.
I don't care about the rest of it, but-
No, we should make sure that it's-
Definitely.
All right.
So that's where that is.
That's the update on that, now-
So Ronnie's waiting for basically a call to go sample the water.
That's right, I'm all set to go. All right, now, other old business, discussion on the culvert, I guess Joel's trying to help us out there, something to do with a, maybe an engineer or something, you help us out there, Joel?
Yeah, I'd like to know if we need, which we may, it's looking pretty good, we may need an engineer just to get things going and drop some plans. The fella that came down and did the site work with us, he did it one time for nothing, he seems to be a pretty good fella, and eager to go, and he wants 6,000 to do, you know, three plans, and you pick one, and he'll put the bid specs out. I just wanted to know if needed, I'm still looking into a couple other things, can we hire him?
Well, I, what's the board think?
We had, you did check some references, we had some-
Yeah, I talked to the state, yeah.
Now, I feel that, I feel we need to keep it moving along here, I'd like to be able to go with this first thing in the spring as soon as we can, have the, be able to do our construction right away.
We got a grant for it, but this is in addition to the grant, we'd have to pay the 6,000 out of our budget.
Well, no, come out of the grant, but-
Depends what the-
We put up the money and then if we invert, am I correct, Linda, I think I said it right?
We have a 90%.
Yeah, we still have to pay 10%.
I understand, yeah, okay.
But I think what Jason was trying to say is, we ought to go ahead and, and give Joel the authority so that this thing can move along.
Right.
Rather than, we only got so much time, we don't want to get behind the eight ball here, that's all.
Well, okay, but you were going to still look into some other-
Yeah, there is one other thing I was going to look into.
Okay.
And-
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem hiring this person.
Yeah.
But I think that we, it would be nice that once you decide, come back with that recommendation and, you know what I'm saying, so that everyone would know-
Yeah, yeah.
-where we're coming from. But I think that, I agree, let's move along. The last one went on for, I don't know how long, a couple years or something, I don't know how long it was, but quite a long time, correct?
Well, you know, I'm just here to ask you because we're coming on the holidays and-
That's right.
We'll miss, we'll miss a bunch of meetings just so we can-
Move, keep moving.
Yeah.
And then if you, you'll feel comfortable on which way you would like to go.
Yeah.
That's fine with me, I'm agreeable.
Joel, can you be prepared to have that information on December 1?
Whether, yes, yeah, yeah.
So I make a motion, we give Joel permission to proceed?
Yeah, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're all done with that? Anything else to say on that? All right, now, we had a discussion on equipment, whatever happened with that?
Yes, I thought about that afterward, last month, we, last week, we talked about putting some equipment out for bid that we have. Two of the items we were going to sell, one is a crushing plant, and the other one is the tractor. I would like to ask Joel to do some research and come up with some, an idea, and like to set some minimum prices on those two pieces of equipment. I think both of them have a substantial value, especially the crushing plant, and-
And then set a minimum bid?
And set a minimum bid on those.
Well, okay, well, I think you were going to do them, do them all, why not? I mean-
Well, the other pieces are, well, one, the other, one dump truck doesn't even run, and the other one's 35 years old, or 36 years old, so it's, and those are basically junk, I would think, junk of scrap value.
Yeah.
But the roadside mowing tractor and the crushing plant.
We want to get our money on them.
Okay, and we're gonna, we'll run those bids the same as we did before, just locally?
Right.
No, we talked about, maybe, we talked about-
The two largest pieces.
No, 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 I meant the old ones.
Yeah, because we don't want to let them go for 500 dollars, you might say, yeah.
That's it, I think that's a good idea. So if you could look into that and establish some sort of a, then, hey, look, we'll put it out to bid, as long as it's over the minimum, whoever wins the bid gets the equipment.
Right, okay.
As far as I'm concerned.
So we can, so you can come up with that, and then from there, we can go ahead and you can-
Yeah, December 1, yeah.
That's what I was going to ask, if we can take care of that.
All right, I'll make a motion to give Joel permission to do this.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No, the other two pieces of equipment. Are we gonna do the same as we did before, Ron, and, um, I forgot what it was, was it?
One's an old transfer station truck.
Truck, okay. Well, what I'm just saying is, before, we just stuck them around in local stores or, isn't that how we done it? The last time we sold something.
So they don't have to go out to bid, is what you're saying?
Well, they, uh, but, but we notify in the stores. How, how did we do that, Linda? Go ahead and.
Would they were posted?
We, we posted it vocal.
I think, I think we oughta run an ad just for.
Or you wanna run an ad? That's fine with me.
Well, I mean, I don't care if you post it in the stores, but if you run an ad, it can't cost too much for them two vehicles.
Okay, for the, right, for the junk, but the other, the other, the other ones, the crushing plant and the tractor, I, I, I would suggest that we would, we would advertise in the Rutland Herald also. Spend a few bucks.
We talked about the B L T's.
We know them things have, have a little more value and we'd like somebody to bid on them to give us more than, a little more than what we feel that the minimum bid should be.
Sure.
Well, you get out there, you know, people.
Well, you get more people to look at it.
We, we've had actually a lot of inquiries about the crusher.
Yeah.
Good.
Which is good. I mean, and, and we're not in, in the mining business, while not in the, in the thoroughbred mining business like we were. We still got a mining place, but we're not operating it. We're not the miners.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
That keeps us out of trouble. I don't wanna be in trouble with the crusher.
We did put something out and I forgot what the heck we sold. One of them old trucks, wasn't it?
We did last year, we did a pickup and we did an old dump truck.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay.
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 However, you guys wanna.
Sound good. Have a good day.
Okay, Joel, thanks a lot.
Hey, you up in good part?
I hope, I hope we didn't keep you too late. Feed the cows.
Well, I do.
All right.
Hi, Joel.
We'll tell the other Joel to let you go if you're going too fast.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess, anything else anybody wants to talk about?
We, we done, we took care of the property down there, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good.